Good afternoon or good evening. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It's August 23rd at about 6:30 PM. We are in the Enfield DPW Conference Room and also on Microsoft Teams. Members present from my left.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
What?
I just muted Phil. Phil's there.
Oh, Phil's there. Okay.
Rob Taylor staff.
Whitney Banker.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Whitney, would you like to be a voting member tonight?
Sure.
Okay. First item of agenda on the agenda is public comments. If anyone is here and has something to say that is not on the agenda, that was your time. Are there any public comments? Okay. We will next go on to the report from the Select Board. Eric, what have they been up to?
We had a good meeting Monday night. Things that might be of interest to this group, the Methodist Hill Property Committee kicked off. They just did their organizational stuff. There's general schedules to try to have a recommendation by December. So they're getting going. The Shed Street property, the RFP for the demolition and rehabilitation of that property is out, which that's the next step in being able to do anything else with that property is to remove the buildings that are there. And then the item we got the most discussion was potential short-term rental ordinance. The brief history is back when Ryan was town manager, since at least three years ago. They drafted an ordinance and went to the Select Board then. They kicked it over to this board to see if they wanted it to be a zoning ordinance versus a just a general town ordinance. It declined, so it's back to the Select Board and it's been brought up again this summer. So had a good discussion about that. I think a little more than a lot of people thought. The general approach is some people wanted to just start over. Most of us felt that, you know, this has clearly been something people have talked about for three, four years at least. So starting where we are makes sense. So we're going to have a, I forget what they call it, not a public hearing, but a sort of a formally time for public comment on it at our next meeting. And then we'll review the draft after hearing public comment on that. So if people are interested in that, it's something worth coming and attending in our next meeting.
Okay. I also noticed that we have two guests. We have Liz from the Valley News and I don't recognize the other people.
They're applicants.
They're applicants. Okay. Rob, it's time for the land use administrator report.
Yeah, so sort of dovetailing on stuff that Eric was just talking about, we're, we've had a walk-through down at Shed Street for contractors that are interested in bidding on the demolition work. I actually took another contractor through yesterday, pointing out things that are obviously of concern and interest to them. Mediation of asbestos and wells, or not wells, it's a collection tank underground and a few of those kind of things, sort of running them through that. So that's certainly an active topic. Continue talking with both developers on the two big possible developments in town. I had a good conversation with Larny Farms, John DiBatteto last week. They're still working with their engineers on stuff and actually in contact, communication with DOT. As we know, for the other possible development, DOT is a big one. So we're dealing with that. Gravel pit, David and I actually attended a meeting today down at Bog Road with the owner. You guys remember it was, Robert had bought the crates pit and was hoping to convert it to a commercial equestrian operation. She's got her zoning approvals. She's been working on the reclamation. I think it way more of a project than she was anticipating. But we tried to give her some guidance, obviously working on your behalf because you guys are the regulator in the case of gravel pit regulations. And so we're, we brought copies of the gravel pit ordinance and regulations that we have. Most important there is steep slopes need to be graded to natural repose and seat cover established once it's, once it's properly graded. So we were working with them, trying to give them some guidance. We met with their, I've been down there a couple of times now with the contractor that's working on the job with some big equipment, dozers, excavators. So we're trying to give them some guidance. She's also got a big logging job going down there. That's 100 acres. As you guys know, it's a big piece of land out there. From what she's told us, it sounds like the commercial equestrian is not going to happen now. She's, she's likely to sell the entire parcel and actually move away. She's looking to move up to Maine. So that one could be coming available for development, obviously 100 acres with some serious frontage. We'll see. Obviously becoming for you guys or whatever, whatever it entails. So we'll see how that goes. I did attend the third session in three weeks, so the last, once a week for the last three weeks of the Housing Academy that we needed to, somebody needs to attend on condition of our grant for the New Hampshire Housing Opportunity Program. Two of them were virtual. One of them was in person. So last week I actually drove to Bedford and attended. Got a lot of good feedback. Obviously a lot of it was centered around facilitation and basically trying to gain community input for the future changes for zonal ordinance. I got a lot of, particularly I was saying to David, you know, most things they, they gave you a lot. They sort of, you know, feed you with a fire hose, but it's really great to be in a cohort of similar communities or communities in a similar situation. They actually have about 60 of these grants active right now around the state for zoning ordinance rewrites. So that was really productive to be able to sort of talk to them and hear what they're doing, how they're doing it.
Commiserate.
Commiserate. Yeah, exactly. And to be perfectly honest with you, a lot of people were pretty impressed with what I was sharing with them as to what we've done, master plan recently. Possible some big developments on the way, housing, obviously the double ADU chain shore ordinance. Made a lot of jaws drop and so it was good. I sat with Peterborough and got to talk to what they're doing down in Peterborough and there was the town of Lee. I think it was probably 15 communities represented in the cohort that I was in. They will be doing another Housing Academy if anybody here wants to go to the next one. We obviously have that at our disposal. So if anybody has any interest to go, I would absolutely recommend it. Being that it was two out of three were virtual, you know, not a huge lift in terms of having to travel. The one trip down to Bedford last week was, was fine. And it was, I was impressed with how huge New Hampshire Housing's complex. It's a, it's a real, it's a real good survey. You know, it's a big house. A lot of people worked in there. But they do, I actually encourage you to go to the New Hampshire Housing website. They have a lot of really great resources on their website, including tons of reports. If you want to see Grafton County median rents, if you want to see the report on housing stock, you want to see, you name it, anything to do with housing, they're going to have it on their website. And they had really great staff that I've become friendly with and they've been very helpful. And as I said, it's just a good relationship building for us and I'm feeling good about where we're at there. At any time, I can share way more than I will right now because we have a lot of business to do tonight, but it continues to be very busy. I did attend last week, the Lebanon City Council meeting, we go tonight on behalf of you guys to basically share your opinion about the Class 6 roads off of Methodist Hill, Atherton and McAllister. I did testify at the hearing. They were basically a proposed settlement with the farm family that owns that giant chunk, chunk of land up there. The city council ultimately voted not to take the settlement and abandon the Class 6 roads in question. So we have a little bit of a reprieve. We'll see. They're, they're back to the drawing board with the attorneys representing the city and the farmers to see what happens next. It continues to be an issue. I did get, one of the farmers came into my office this week to talk to me. They were making claims about that we had let one of the property owners on our side of the state, of the town line, put a structure up too close to the road. So I did visit the site this morning, took a picture and had been in communication with the property owner in question and had asked him to move. It's a sort of a temporary woodshed, basically pallets down with a bunch of firewood and it's very close to the Class 6 road. As you guys know, I've continuously enforced the same setback for Class 6 as we do for any other road. So he's got, he's got to be that 30 feet. So he's going to move this wood storage complex that he's got. It's kind of a shed. He claimed it was more of just a pile, but it does have a metal roof on it. And so he was, said, can I take the metal roof off? And I said, well, still defined as a structure by our ordinance. So we're going to enforce the 30-foot setback. So he agreed to move it. He was concerned whether we were going to come after him for his driveway being too close to, and I said, that's, that's exempted from the buffer zone. He had a camper that he parked close to the road. I said, that's also not a problem because it's registered with the state. So ultimately, I think we're simpatico there. He's going to move the wood storage. And so we'll keep our eyes on the prize and keep our ear to the ground for what happens with that. It was very interesting. The hearing at City Hall was, was heavily attended. There's a lot of people there, but it was almost universal. People were in opposition of the city abandoning the, the trails, which basically used to be Class 6. They redefined them about two years ago to Class A trails, which is their prerogative. So I thought we could do it here in, it actually, it's at a vote of the town meeting, I think might be required. I'm not sure. Yeah. I know throwing them up is a vote of town meeting. You know, city council can do it because they have, they have that power. But I think, you know, I shared with them how much regret my hometown had of throwing up a couple of Class 6 roads. That was before we had zoning and we basically abandoned the Class 6 to prevent development. And it was a huge regret later on because it's one of our most beautiful old roads that would have been great to still have. So it was well received and obviously it's good for us to continue to fight for our property. And I am going to be attending, again dovetailing on what Eric said, the next meeting of the Methodist Hill Property Use Committee as the zoning administrator to sort of talk about zoning limitations and allowances on that property. And then we also assisted with butters notifications for the subsequent meeting to that, which will be in September, notifying all of the 200-foot butters to come to a meeting and have their voices heard, which included at least four property owners on the Lebanon side of the line because that's right on the Lebanon Enfield town line. So I think it was maybe 20 butters that we, that we notified. And it also includes the association that encompasses that, is it Fieldstone Ridge or what's it called?
Yeah.
Yeah, upon Methodist Hill.
Ridge.
Yep, rich land. So that's, you know, that's just a quick synopsis. I know we've got a lot of stuff to consider tonight. Obviously here, anybody has any questions, reach out anytime.
Thanks, Rob. We have a couple of meeting minutes. We have August 9th. Let's take that first. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do not have any.
Well. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes as is.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Because Phil is talking to us remotely, we have to do a roll call. So Eric.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
I vote aye. Brad?
Aye.
Tim? Whitney?
I'll abstain.
Whitney abstains. And Phil?
Aye.
Phil says aye. The minutes are adopted as proposed by our wonderful minute taker. Thank you again for another great job. What's the date on the other set of minutes that we have?
We already approved those.
We approved them.
We didn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was July 20 something.
All right.
Another couple of websites.
Um, hearings. First is land use case P 23-08-01. Charles Perkins, Linda Burrows trustees and Sandra Sharpe have jointly applied for boundary line adjustment to resolve a longstanding lot line encroachment issue. The subject parcels are located at seven and nine Water Lily Lane respectively. That's tax map 10A lots 40 and 41, and they are within the R1 zoning district. Seven Water Lily Lane is owned by Sandra M. Sharpe and is 0.106 acres. Nine Water Lily Lane is owned by the Norm Bega Revocable Trust, Charles Perkins and Linda Burrows trustees, and that is 0.89 acres. I think Scott, you're going to present.
I am. You covered the basics. I was hired by Mr. Perkins last summer to do a survey of his lot and we discovered this encroachment, which has been there for quite some time. And so he and the neighborhood amicably, amicably agreed to resolve it by straightening out a jog in the boundary line between the two lots. So that's what we're showing. And as you stated, the Sandra Sharp lot is going to be going from 4,620 square feet up to 4,914 square feet. And the Perkins lot will be reduced from 3864 to 3570 square feet. We're trading about 294 square feet of land from one to the other. The, this doesn't, and this is all on community sewer, community water. So it doesn't require state approval. It also doesn't, obviously doesn't impact the, you know, any septic systems or anything like that because it's all like in the community services. So it's pretty straightforward. And again, the purpose is simply to correct the longstanding encroachment. The one thing I want to add before I turn it over for questions, and that's anticipation of a question that might be asked is that we're, these lots are all well below the minimum zoning requirement. The position I'm taking in this supplemental, and the board may agree or not, but these lots being part of a planned community development that was, been approved, they have interest in the entire development, not just solely the lots themselves. So it's not a typical residential lot situation. So I mean, I'm, my approach would be to say that these, this is an internal change within the development. It doesn't change the density of the development. And it doesn't create any non-conformance of the development itself as a whole. So if the board agrees with that, we can move forward with the decision tonight. And if the board doesn't agree with that, then I would ask for a conditional approval and we would take it to the ZBA. But I'm trying to avoid double, double set of fees for my client and I'll leave that question in the hands of the board. So that's kind of where I'm at on it. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Okay. Board members, have any questions on this application?
What's the nature of the encroaching?
It's a, an attached shed to the, to the building on seven Sandra Sharp. If you look at the, where parcel A is and the dash line, it goes through a couple of feet into the attached shed. And that, I think, and also catches a little bit of the bulkhead. So it's all part of the original construction of the building. It's not something that was added on later, at least as I understand it at any rate.
Any more questions from the board? Dan?
Yeah, I guess my only question is can we actually do it? You've got two non-conforming lots and you're making one of the lots even more non-conforming. I just, I don't know. I think it has to be, I mean, well, Brad has a case in point.
Yeah.
He had to do the same thing on Crystal Lake because both of them were non-conforming. He wanted to do a boundary line adjustment because the brick was on the wrong side of the lot line. So he had to go through zoning in order to get it approved. And that's always been the case.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a procedure called an equitable waiver.
Right.
And that, in my mind, seems to fit this situation.
Right.
And equitable waiver is when through no fault of anyone, it is discovered that a boundary line or what has been assumed to be a boundary line is not in fact the boundary line that was laid out or as in this case where, you know, you've got a
Someone's using it.
Yeah. So, you know, it kind of boils down to a case of should the applicant go to the ZBA first and get the equitable waiver? Or should we grant the boundary line and condition it upon receipt of the equitable waiver? So I think that might be what this board needs to discuss and decide. But Rob, you have a comment?
I was just going to say the other thing that I thought might work, but maybe it doesn't work for your clients would be an even Steven, you know, if you basically move the lot lines such that there is no change, square footage of each lot.
I suggested that in the beginning and this is what they came back asking me to do. So I would, I would say the answer to that is okay. So yeah, like I said, it's not a surprise to me that this is the board's position, but in this case I felt I would take, take it here first. I agree with you. The equitable dimensional waiver is certainly the approach we would take. I think it does apply. I agree with that.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that it would be voted down in a situation like this because you'd be creating far more hardship by denying it than you would be arguing it. So, and I know that the zoning board, that's not the business that they're in. So but, but because again, I, I looked at it from the perspective of being a development and this being an internal change, like changing a wall in a house in a condominium. So that's why I brought it here first and see what y'all had to say and perhaps save my client of another set of fees.
Yeah.
If you disagree, then we'll just go ahead. But I would ask for the conditional approval tonight. So we don't have to then come back before the board and I can leave the plat with, with Rob and then once we get through the zoning board, I think it can be moved forward.
So yeah, I mean, that's, you know, your job is to argue the case for your clients. And I think you've done an excellent job of doing that. The question before the board is should we do a conditional approval conditioned upon receiving the equitable waiver? Or should we send them to the ZBA and let the ZBA say thumbs up and thumbs down, in which case we would continue this hearing until the next hearing date after they could get on the ZBA agenda, whenever that is. Your thoughts?
I could, I can buy a conditional as long as one of the conditions is that this plat does not change.
True. Yeah, we certainly have no intention.
The zoning can't change the plat.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Let's go around the table, Eric.
I think that's fair. As long as there's not an actual change to what's been presented, then that's fair enough.
Agreed. Yeah, I, I see no downside to anybody involved, including us.
Okay. Whitney? Phil?
Yeah, I agree with Dan.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to, well, actually I should ask public if there are any questions or comments. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Board members, is there further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the boundary adjustments at nine and seven Water Lily Lane with the condition that it get approved, an approval from the zoning board and that the plat stays the same as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We have to do a roll call. Eric, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Phil?
Aye.
And Whitney?
Aye.
Okay. It is passed. I will write a decision that essentially says that we approve the plat as it's drawn and that approval is pending receipt of an equitable waiver from NCLZBA.
Or variance.
Or variance.
They may decide to do a variance.
Okay.
That's why I said approval by the zoning.
Okay.
Because I'm not going to tell them what they have to do. I'm just telling them they can't change the plat.
Well, when, when they, when, when, when your client applies to the ZBA, they have to do one or the other, don't they?
They can do both.
They can do both?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get them. Yeah, we get time here next week. Right. It will be the October meeting. It's the deadline for September longer.
Okay. You stay right there.
You're still with us.
What, you're staying?
I'm staying.
Whoa.
Where's my cot?
You get two of them tonight.
Next. I can find my, yeah, there we are. Next is land use case number P 23-08-02. Philip Bartels and Audrey Hartman Ross, as well as Karen Allen have jointly applied for boundary line adjustment approval to annex a 20-foot, 25-foot wide strip of land from tax map 45 lot four owned by Allen to map 45 lot five Bartels and Hartman Ross. Both subject properties are within the R3 residential zoning district. Lot five is currently 1.19 acres and will become 1.51 after the annexation. Lot four is presently 4.76 acres and will become 4.44 acres after the adjustment. Lot four is owned by Karen Allen. Lot five is owned by Philip Bartels and Audrey Hartman Ross. So as I understand this, we have a conforming lot and a non-conforming.
Sorry, I just had one change. The, I messed it up in the, in the wording there. I read it to be a hyphenated last name and it's not. Philip Bartels and Audrey Hartman. And then the other owner, owners are Ross and Karen Allen. So
Oh.
That's a little mess up. She called me and I wanted to make sure that I corrected that.
Okay. Thank you. The correction is noted. So we have a lot that is conforming and it's 1.76 acres larger than the three acre minimum. We have a non-conforming lot and the conforming lot is proposing to transfer some land to the non-conforming lot, which would make it less non-conforming. Do I have that right, Scott?
That is exactly correct.
All right.
Great. And we know we are, yeah, I know, I don't, I don't anticipate the same question as the last one on this one because.
Okay. So I'm going to let you explain all this. Well, you just did pretty well. So yeah, the I mean, I don't know that the purpose of the annexation is specifically because it's gone conforming, but, but this, you know, the smaller lot of 4505, which was
owned by Philip Bartels and Audrey Hartman is, is about 1.2 acres and we're transferring a little over three tenths of an acre to that. The, I think the, the real end game is that they've, they've agreed to. Expand it by the twenty-five foot strip, and the, the acreage is sort of secondary to that. Uh, but the uh. The resulting boundary line uh does not. Create any non-conformances with lot forty-five zero four, the Allen's lot. And um, the only non-conformance actually is the acreage, the frontage conforms, the setbacks conform on the um. Hartman Bartels lot. And so that will be. Even more conforming, I guess, if you will, but it gives them more room to, to work with uh on their lawn. So that's all we've done. Um, the uh. The Allen's lot uh requires approval from the State Department of Environmental Services, because they kick in at five acres or less. This is already less than five acres, and we're making it smaller, so they have to approve. Uh, it's been submitted some time ago, I thought I would have in hand by tonight, but I do not. So, once again, I'd have to ask for a conditional approval. It's probably coming tomorrow now that I'm here now, but uh. Uh, but that, that's in the works. It far exceeds the minimum requirements the state has. Uh, so I don't anticipate any issues with that. Uh. But uh, yeah, that's uh, yeah, I think I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Scott?
I have one, um. Just briefly, briefly explain that. The state's interested in that five acre.
Well, it's actually similar to the making a non-conforming lot less conforming, uh, not. This is an exact analogy, but the uh, any new law that's created, it's considered a subdivision in the states, by the states, uh, by the statute that defines that. The uh. It's, but it is similar to making a non-conforming lot less conforming. So if I was making a new lot. Greater than five acres, only the town has to, but if I'm creating a new lot, less than five acres, D E S needs to approve it, and that's a.
Because it's a less uh water body?
It's, well, no, not because of the water body, but because uh. They, they need, they want to ensure that you're not creating lots that cannot handle an onsite septic disposal. And in their wisdom, many months ago, they determined that anything over five acres, you're gonna be able to find a spot for septic somewhere, which may or may not be the case. But that's, you didn't hear the idea.
No matter where the lot is located, it's happening.
Correct. It's a, it's a state-based, a statutory requirement, uh, so. Uh, so when you're taking a lot that's, whether it's, if it's already over five acres and it's being made less than, less than five. Or if you're taking one that's already under five and making it smaller, it kicks in the need for that approval, so. And they, there, there's no, um, there's really no waiver process for it. So even if you have a lot that's four point nine five acres and all sand, and you take two thousand square feet out of it, they still have to approve it. And I know this because I've had that exact situation before. And it's not, can't. And so there's really no way to process. So even though it seems a little excessive, you have to go through the, the process with them on that, so. Uh, does that answer your?
Yes.
Okay, any other board members have questions? Are, are you good? Okay, uh, members of the public, are there any questions or comments? Sir, identify yourself.
Paul Curry, I live on Crystal Lake, bro. I'm a buddy to Lee Allen.
Mm-hmm.
We've been neighbors for a good many years. And I strongly support what you're doing.
All right, thank you for that comment. Any other comments from the public? Okay, public hearing is closed. Board members, any discussion?
No.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the. Boundary line adjustment with the condition that. They receive a D E S approval.
Motion made, do I? Would you second that? You're good. Uh, motion made and seconded. You'd have to do a roll call. Eric, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Brad? Did you say nay?
Yay.
Yay, okay. Uh, Whitney says aye, Phil?
Aye.
All right. Um, boundary line adjustment is approved for your plat, uh, subject to receipt of an appropriate. Permit from the D E S. Thanks so much. Scott, thanks for coming in.
Appreciate your time and consideration.
Nice job.
We, we appreciate your good work.
And a check, Scott.
All right. Next. Land use case, P twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh three. Vicki Feller.
How we told.
Everybody settle in here.
Yeah.
Good. So it's land use case, P twenty-three oh eight oh three. Vicki Fellerin has applied for minor site plan review. To add a bingo hall entertainment venue to use. A bingo hall entertainment venue use. To the used auto sales use in the space currently occupied. By Shaker Valley Auto at four fifty-three U S Route five. Map fourteen lot sixty-nine. parcel is owned by Carl and Vicki Fellerin and is two point one seven acres. It is in the Route four zoning district. Um. I have a couple of concerns. About the application. Firstly, according to our regs. This should be a major site plan. And I will cite specifically. The expansion, this is under uh, section one point five point two, minor review. Uh, expansion of non-residential floor space. No, that's not it. Um.
One point five point three, point three.
Um. Point three. Yeah, okay, I'll go along with that. Um. Well, no, actually, we're going to one point five. Point two, the first bullet. Which is change of use of non-residential site. For which no change in floor area is proposed. And which maintains or decreases the intensity of use on the site. With respect to parking demand and traffic generation. Or for a site with twenty-five hundred square feet or less of gross floor area. Your building, I think the cover letter is over six thousand square feet. So that kicks it into major review. Um. So. The board in agreement that this should be a major site plan review?
Oh, is there? Could someone give us an argument as to why it was not considered major?
That was me. I guess I was, you know. I was looking at it as that they're, they're not expanding the building at all. It's the same, exact same building that they're doing. But David has, David and I debate these things. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to debate it before this came for you guys. Uh, he was a very busy guy, and so, so am I, but. Uh, the one that we were talking about, under major review, any other development, redevelopment, change of use. Or expansion of a multifamily or non-residential site. That was what kicked it in. When David and I finally did have our discussion.
Yeah.
I, I acquiesced in. I have sent them the updated uh invoice that reflects major versus minor. Obviously, it's another two hundred and fifty dollars, a five hundred dollar.
Yeah.
Hearing fee as opposed to a two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And John does have a copy of the uh invoice to reflect that.
Okay, I, I hate to ding you for the extra money, but uh. We have our, our rules, and whether they're fair or not fair, it's open for debate. Um. So we're gonna consider this as a major. And is the application complete?
You've got an opinion on that, too.
I, I, I'm full of opinions today.
Yes.
Um, in my board packet, all I received was a. Copy, let me see if I've got it here. Look, this drawing, which is the floor plan of a single building. Um, a site plan submission. Could be a drawing of the entire site showing the lot lines. All the buildings, all the roadways, all the parking spaces. Um, I would like to see. Square footage. Indicated on the. Various rooms in the uh. Structure that were, that were focused on.
Okay.
So. My proposal. Okay, and a, another thing, um. Since our, our regulation for a major site plan. Um. Requires a licensed surveyor or engineer to do the drawing. Since this is an existing building and you're not contemplating um. Any major changes or expansions or anything like that. It is possible for you to request a waiver. From the board. And I think that has, does that have to be done in writing?
Oh.
No?
Oh.
Well, you could probably request that here tonight.
I will request, request right now.
Okay.
Right now.
And, you know, what's, what's, what's important to us. Is, you know, the dimensions, so that we can kind of put the whole thing together and. Decide, you know, is there enough room for parking? Is there enough room? Uh, in the building for the number, well, actually, that's not, I, I value.
No, because Liam's already.
Liam does that.
Okay, he's already approved.
Mm-hmm.
Done.
So, um. We have a request for. A waiver of the requirement for a professionally drawn. Um, site plan.
Make a motion and we accept that.
Motion made?
Second.
Made and seconded. Roll call again. We'll start with Whitney.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am. I vote aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
And Phil?
Aye.
Okay. So we have granted you your waiver.
Okay, thank you.
And um, now we need to reschedule your hearing. How long do you think it will take you to pull together the information that I've just listed? And also, I would advise you to go through the. Submission requirements for a major site plan. Uh, and I, I think Rob could help you on that.
Okay.
I, I don't think you'll need any, any more waivers. But um. You should just go through the, through the list and whatever is appropriate. Um, the information that we need to know. Um, that needs to be indicated.
How soon can we get back here?
Uh, Rob, schedule?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
We can continue.
Okay, so that would be the. What, of September?
I guess I just wanna make sure that you guys tell them exactly what you want. So, because we're right here.
Yeah.
Okay, make sure that, I mean, because they did come in for conceptual.
Yeah.
I will take a lot of the responsibility, because I was asking them for minor. And to me, that, that felt sufficient for minor site plan submission. Um, obviously majors, different follow-ups. So, um.
Well, let me, let me.
Boundary lines of the area included in the site, including angles or bearings, is that, is that what you're talking about, David?
Uh, let's see, boundary lines. Uh, I don't think we need um bearings or anything like that. We do need the dimensions.
What page are you referring?
Page thirteen of site plan.
And this is, this is nothing, though, that we could. Uh, bring up the town's.
Yeah.
Yep.
Map.
Some of that. Well.
I mean, it's already there.
What I'm saying is. I, I know we're, we got this. Sprung on us.
Yeah, I understand.
So. But also, you know, like he had said, we were here before. So I'm just saying, is that where we can just bring up on the computer the G I S? That shows you the actual boundaries? I mean.
I mean, if, if you wanna use that for boundaries, would the board be amenable to that?
Have we done that before?
I can't, I can't recall having done that on a site plan.
Bob did a survey, you guys did a subdivision for that.
Right.
For that lot. We could probably help him find a copy of that survey.
So the, the survey would probably have a lot of that information.
Yeah, well, the only reason I'm saying this. We're just trying to get this thing done.
Right.
So.
I understand.
So what I'm saying is, if you guys, if you're looking at it for like parking wise.
Yeah.
Like. The place. Holds at least two hundred used cars at this point. I mean, I don't think there's any question on where. If we have enough room for parking.
I, I think it, we've had member cases where it's clear that the town G I S does not necessarily match exactly what's in the survey. However, in this case, there's no new buildings being.
No.
Right.
Building, so everything is already existing. I, I think it would be perfectly adequate. For this situation.
I'm great.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, but hold the copy from Bob's subdivision.
Yeah, if, if you can find, if you can find that, that would be even better.
Well.
Or you can just print it off of.
Well, I guess what I was trying, what I was trying to say is to speed it along is.
Can we do it tonight?
Can we bring it up on the board and say?
Here it is.
You know, because I'm, I'm just saying you guys know the prop, I mean, I'm thinking most of you guys know the property and know that there was.
I don't think you can do that, because we warned the minor subdivision, right? Not having your.
Minor site plan.
Minor site plan, sorry.
Um, I mean, you know, e- even if we bring, bring it up on the, on the screen, we're, we're still missing. You know, dimensions, the s- the sizes of the building. Um, the number of square feet that you have.
Wouldn't that all be on there?
Uh, you guys do have the other spaces. You guys do have the other.
Their packets.
Yeah, I mean, there, there should have been three sets.
Uh, what, what should we have?
Uh, should have the whole parking, the parking spaces, the handicap, the seat.
Dimensions are on here.
Okay.
Eyes like it's seen. I mean, um, but I don't see the numbers.
They got uh, dimensions on the building, uh.
You got the.
Every room is.
On the, on the rooms.
Every, I, yeah. I mean, we got the seat layout.
Yeah.
Um.
This is the parking.
I even had your, you guys should have where the lighting is.
The lighting.
We got the light.
Uh.
Yeah.
I get everything that you guys, I thought it asked the first time. I.
Has the sewer issue been resolved?
No. So that's, we're gonna have to go to the selectmen. And the town manager. Oh yeah, so you got the parking spaces, the handicaps, the dimensions of the building, the seats, the chairs. Uh. Yeah.
Well, I mean, on, on, on this map here, the one that I'm looking at. This one?
Yeah.
That's this one.
I'm, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Parking spaces.
Seven parking spaces plus three handicap.
Yep.
And, you know, that's not adequate.
No.
And, and I, and I understand that, you know, there's more spaces available in other parts of the property. But I, I would need to see that. You know, laid out on, on, on a map. Or on a, a plan.
Would we make that a condition?
We could. Is it? Is it? Is it everybody's, I, I'm, I'm just saying, like, we know.
The existing.
You know the existing, and you know the. I mean, the place has a, I mean, the lot is huge, and. I guess that's where I'm getting hung up, is I'm where. It's. It just seems a little. Wasteful, I'm saying, to, to do.
I would somewhat agree with you, John, but there's a problem here. This is a different use. You're also still gonna be selling used cars.
Yes.
Right.
Which are in what you would be calling parking spaces.
Yep.
So we've gotta, we've gotta know that you have enough. Parking spaces, not only for. The hundred people who you're going to have every night. But also for the used cars.
So if, if.
That are being.
Exactly. So if you guys look. On you, this, the packet.
Yeah.
And you'll see the sign at the top. That has been there for a long time, that says over two hundred cars. Right now. Robert. Right now, Robert has, I think, fifty-five to sixty. We're not anywhere in shape to even remotely do the same things he's doing, I guess is what.
I I I understand that, but from my point, from my point of view, we we need to see it on paper, not uh, on a picture of of the sign.
Okay, so we just have to make a drawing of the parking lot?
Of the of the entire site.
The whole land? With just.
Land with the buildings and the park.
Okay.
That's it.
We can do that.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, it should not, it should not be difficult. Rob can find the survey from when um, that land was uh, was subdivided.
Correct.
And, yeah, I mean, I think you could do it in two weeks.
Oh, I know.
Oh, I got no doubt.
Okay.
I want it tomorrow.
We're just, I'm just trying to get it done tonight.
No, I I understand. I I don't think it's possible to get it done tonight, but I do think.
Even if this had been a minor, you still would have had to show the parking.
They would.
Now, do you want, do you want the lines and everything?
Um.
Because he has no lines. Robert had.
I know.
Not any lines.
I I think what we would need is the dimension.
Where the parking lot is.
Where the parking lot is, and from that, we can figure out
Cars.
how many cars you can fit in in a quote legal parking space, which now is, are we at eighteen by? It's, we haven't changed it, okay.
Could be right on your.
Twenty twenty by ten, two hundred square feet.
Nine by eighteen for the.
Handicap?
Handicap. And then they deleted the rest of them at nine by eighteen.
Well.
That's okay. I think.
Just.
I mean, you know, I I I would live by nine by eighteen if he says he could fit two hundred cars on the lot. Um, I suspect very strongly that there's enough space for however many people are likely to show them for bingo or an event or whatever. But um, we just, you know, to approve it, we have to have it on paper.
Okay.
So that if there's ever an issue down the road, you know, we can go back to it and say, well, this is what we approved.
Yeah.
And.
Well, we would have brought that, but we were not knowing.
No, I I I I understand.
Also, an estimate of how many used cars you think you're gonna have in the.
Yeah.
Just an estimate, yeah.
Yeah, because we would probably want to say as a condition that, you know, given, let's say you have two hundred parking spaces and you need, I'm gonna guess a hundred for bingo people, we would probably want to put a condition that you not carry an inventory of let's say, a hundred ninety-five cars because you have five employees who need to park as well. But I, you know, o- other than that, I think your your big hurdle is the uh, the the septic.
Oh, the septic.
Septic or sewer.
Who makes that decision, the sewer decision?
Yeah, you said you're going before the select board.
Yes.
That's who's gonna have to make it.
We will go speak to that.
Mm hmm.
Because I've already. Probably don't want me to say.
No, just we'll just meet up with, okay, I'll meet up with them and.
Well, there's not a situation where if the if they go on town sewer, there's no question the capacity and like building.
Right, correct.
accommodate use of your your tent. If you don't go on town sewer, um, then I think we'd need to know the septic system was there, is adequate for the ten years.
Exactly, and I I think we had that discussion during the conceptual phase.
Yeah, and we, and we were, I don't believe we saw any information.
There was none.
No, no, we didn't, and we didn't get that.
Yeah.
So let me ask, is it?
Does it even matter? Because isn't the rule that if the property is sold, then it has to be connected?
I don't want to answer that question. But the question he's asking is. That that seems to be an area of contention.
Right.
Okay.
I I think the question Tim's asking, which is very appropriate, is if that doesn't happen, then the site plan should not be approved without knowing the septic is adequate.
Gotcha.
Right.
Right, you you have to have.
Gotcha.
One, enjoying sewer, no problem. Two, you keep the septic, in which case, we'd want to know that it's adequate for the new.
Right.
That you gotta get.
A fair summary?
Yeah. Yes, and and I think that determination would have to be a a similar license, set of license.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I that I'm saying.
Um, and the other thing, since you're running food service, um, we would probably condition it upon um, whatever state agency governs food service.
THHS.
D H H S. Thanks, Rob.
But there will be no grease. It's gonna be an air fryer, so it's a lot different.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that that's something that you have to talk to.
Yes.
The D H H S about. And, you know, I I just want to make you aware that having those, that permit or those permits, whatever their requirements are, is gonna be part of um
Yeah, you should.
Us granting you.
That too? So I, so I've got to get that within two weeks?
No.
No, 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 no. We cannot, we cannot hold up anything for a state permit. We can only make it a condition.
Okay.
It's the same way if you you're on a state road, if you didn't have a driveway permit, we would say a condition is you get a driveway permit from the state.
Yeah.
It's only a condition.
So.
This condition would be that you get all state permits.
Yeah.
That are necessary.
Mm hmm. And I think you've already got a driveway permit.
Yeah.
Change of use.
Right.
Or that's in process.
Set section five, right, then you'll walk and through, right? Article five. Site plan.
Site plan.
Site plan. Standards of parking.
Yeah.
If you want to, you want to come back tomorrow, I'll pull that survey. Let's Bob, just, did Bob share that with you guys when you bought it?
He probably did, but I'll get yours.
Yeah.
I don't want to have to go ask Bob. He's kind of ugly these days.
Okay.
Okay, um, you know, I I want to reiterate that we want to make this happen. We want to make, you know, make your business a success, but we've got to go through our procedures before we can do that.
Okay.
Okay?
So it would be the parking.
The dimensions.
Oh, he's got the, well.
We'll have that.
The whole.
Right.
Everything on the lot.
Yeah.
Everything on the lot.
Parking and then the kitchen to the steak thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the sewer to the.
To the.
Down.
Door.
Yep.
And and your your square feet of of the rooms.
Now, so they are on your.
Yeah, we, I just can't.
Okay, I can't read them either.
Because I've got it eight by, eight by eleven.
But I did give, but I did.
Different plan than I have. Mine doesn't have the seats.
You're not.
I.
You should have five.
Yeah, I. I got cheated.
Yeah.
Sewer. Yeah, I got the one with the stink, but I still, I just can't read all the numbers.
Yeah.
I'm all over. My eyes are bad.
No excuses.
I know.
But if we had those, but if we had, if we had all that tonight, we still couldn't do it because we didn't have the
We've got.
Major.
We got it, we do, yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be a.
No, say we had everything, but we still couldn't do it tonight either way.
No, because it's a major.
What happens to that?
It's been posted as a minor.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, so they they need to get a licensed uh, septic guy to verify the.
Only if.
Only if.
Only if.
Only if the town says that they can stay on septic and don't and don't have to connect.
Yeah.
Have you, have you scheduled yourselves with the select board?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Um, Eric, can you give any advice on getting to them on getting on the select board?
And.
And just Kate's the chair of the board, so she officially sets the agenda.
Yeah, it'll be the first Tuesday, but it's the first Monday's Labor Day. And I think our our approval is conditional either or. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So that doesn't have to be resolved for them to come back.
No.
No, 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 because we're gonna put a condition on it anyways. We've already got, because they won't have their license from the state by then, I doubt it. So nice. Food.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll tell them they're they're taking this summer off.
Yeah. Okay, um. What else do you guys see that we need to?
Don't ask for anymore.
No, let's, 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 let's go through this to make sure that um, you know, we we don't say.
I mean, I like going by the rules, but I said to him before, when we got here, oh, by the way, it's changed because now it's a major.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. I said, I should have just moved in there and you guys come and.
Right here.
Rob, Rob is good at.
Right here.
I was backing people down.
Yeah. I think that's probably what we need.
All right, so.
We're good.
So.
So just get with Rob.
Yeah, so I'll get with you.
Yeah.
We'll see. We'll go through that. And then, yeah. So we get that stuff, we're good. Yeah.
Back in two weeks.
Put that on.
All right.
Don't forget.
Okay, and I'm I'm happy to sit in on that meeting tomorrow if you want to. If the time, I don't think, I don't think I have too much going on.
Not sure where time I can get up here, but I can try to email you or something.
You talk, you talk to Rob, Rob will talk to me, and if I can make it, I will.
Yeah, all right.
Cool.
With the second Tuesday, right? So the second Tuesday, so it's actually three weeks from today.
Yeah.
But we need to continue, so we need to continue the hearing?
Um, I don't think we ever opened it.
We never opened a hearing, so we don't have to.
And and he's gonna be warned it anyhow as a major.
I know. Yeah, so it's an all.
Thank you.
The whole do it.
Get the whole do it. For for which is only gonna pay the difference because the uh, the the notification fees.
Right.
Um, I think we're gonna eat.
Yeah.
Because.
Because of our, fairly ours. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yes.
Okay. So conceptual is none, new business, discussion of stakeholders in the zoning rewrite. I know Rob has been working on a list, and as soon as he come back, comes back in, um, we can tackle that. So let's, let's go on to rules of procedure. Tim, how are you coming on the edit?
Well, your secretary uh, sit today, have this meeting with the town manager, which we did. And I think we came up with some some good, got a lot of good feedback, a lot of useful, um, supportive, I thought, feedback from.
Mm hmm.
And um, yeah, and I was supposed to uh, write all that up and have it to you, and I just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Work session.
My bad.
Works.
No problem. We're all messing up today.
Oh, we'll get enough stuff on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
I'd like to. While this is fresh on our mind, we had, we had two front line adjustments tonight and and either a thing with a major.
Major, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything about that that strikes you as something we ought to see doesn't happen in our new zoning ordinance rewrite procedure wise?
Well, it's difference between the zoning and what's on the ground. We've talked about that.
Yeah.
Right? And so hopefully, the zoning will, it's not gonna fix it completely, right? But it should help.
You're not.
But if you get eighty percent of it.
Yeah.
You're not gonna change, you're not going to be to what's on the ground at North Shaker Village.
Yeah, that's.
No, I mean, we had a couple of things there where, you know, what, what's on the ground and what's in the deed uh, and what's on the tax map just do not line up at all. Yeah, I don't know why that is.
And that's particularly bad in Shaker Village? Well, it is because it it's eight tenths of an acre, i- I mean, eight hundredths of an acre and the the real joke there is the eight hundredths of an acre, one is the one that's getting smaller.
Right.
So. So that's two more. And there's two more just like this, yeah. And we've done two or three of them before.
Yeah.
Can't agree to come here. Right, where people put their porches across the line because nobody knew where the line was.
Or the, or they thought the line was someplace else.
You can't put a three thousand square foot on twenty-five hundred square feet.
And in one case, the person at one point owned both lots, put their porch over the line and sold the other lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um, okay, well, and then that's probably kind of points to me is is the reason why I think, and I suggested this when consultants were here, that that we ought to look at Shaker Village as kind of a separate stake.
Yeah.
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 Special rules may apply.
Mm hmm.
Absolutely.
There'll be a few of those.
Because if you were to say what's on the, what's on the ground, they'd all be point one acres. And if somebody had a point two, you would then be able, you, they'd then be able to subdivide it.
Well, that may be what. What that community wants. I I want to hear what.
Yeah, they're a stakeholder. I agree.
Terms of uh, zoning.
They're a major stakeholder.
Yeah. So Rob, while you were out with the Pellerins, I was saying that you had started a list of stakeholders?
Got it. I'm passing around.
Let's.
Basically, just a beginning, so you guys can add and track.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna go to Pat right here. Pat's speaking, that's who, I see him. I probably threw it.
Hey, Rob, did you email that out?
I did not, but I can right now. You got, are you sitting by your computer? Obviously, you're sitting.
Sitting by my computer, yeah, you can email it to me.
I'll email it to you right now. There you go, Phil. Can you read it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. That better?
That's better, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why are we adding uh, a developer to a list like this? Just for their input?
Yeah, exactly.
Why, why not type of thing?
Yeah, why not, that's, they are, I do their own.
I would add the um, the three lake association groups.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I I think it might be helpful to kinda break this down into uh, categories.
Yeah.
You know, developer builders, for instance, and then a list of those that we come to mind.
Right, employees.
Yeah.
Employees and town officials.
Uh. You know, businesses in town.
Yeah.
List of those. But that Shaker Village, I I think there's multi.
There's more than one homeowners association.
Yeah, there's each one of those.
Three or four of them.
Could be on a list, you know, under Shaker Village.
Does Lakeview condos have a homeowners association?
Certainly do.
They certainly do.
They should be.
They should be on the list.
Eastern Village should be on the list.
Yeah.
They sort of are.
Are they? Steve's odd there.
And you know, Lakeview. Anybody have any idea how many units are there, is about a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
So population wise, it's two point two or whatever it is.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably over three hundred people there, yeah.
And, I mean, that actually might. Might be a a large enough entity that. It it has its own little special, maybe not, but you know, it's its own special zoning.
Well, we need to ask them what they need.
Phil, check your email.
Um, so condo associations or Lakeview and where else?
Uh, well, the Crystal Lake, cause the Budman, Star Drive.
Well, there's a.
Colby is all.
There's a, there's an all encompassing. There's, there's one uh, Crystal Lake Association, I'm sure Matt's going to say, and then every private road has another one. I don't know if you wanna add.
I don't think it's every private road.
Um, the three I know all have association.
Do they? Cause I know Star, Colby and Buck, and I think are all the same one.
Yeah, and then mine has a separate one.
I I would think you would have to because of a a maintenance agreement.
Maintenance.
Yeah.
But there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of smaller ones around too, like.
Right.
There's someone Anderson Hill.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Goodwood Road has one.
Right, Goodwood, yeah, there's a number of.
Serendipity Way has one.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as, yeah.
I'm adding here, so you guys have said private roads.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's more of a, by every individual. Private road.
Three main ones, and then there's lots of little ones, I don't know how crazy we wanna go.
Yeah.
We can just say everyone in town.
Well, no, I think, I think you're right, we do the Crystal Lake Association. And because by doing that, you're gonna be bringing in the same people.
Same people.
That are in the homeowners associations.
Yeah.
You see, you could say uh, Lakeview condos.
Yep.
Jim Keller is the Shaker Village um, representative too, he's, I think he's still president of the H O A.
Yeah.
Uh, of one of them.
There's several entities.
Right, there's more, yeah.
There's the the museum itself.
And you know, I mean, I think by by being stakeholders. You know, obviously, everybody's gonna have a opportunity to input. But you sort of, I think what what the goal of the stakeholders thing is to try to get sort of representative.
Right.
Right.
Uh, so we don't necessarily need to talk to everybody. But at the very same time, and they're, they're doing a review of our existing ordinance. And they sort of want some feedback as to like, what is some of the major malfunction, or what are the hangups with, are existing? Obviously, when we start getting into the visioning or the uh, community input, everybody's be welcome.
Right.
But this is sort of on the front end, like, do we have, do we have problems with private roads? I think we do, and absolutely, if you talk to.
Huge.
At least a representative of one or two of them.
Right now, it's very bad right now.
But you may wanna have an individual meetings with groups like. Absolutely.
But I mean.
The Crystal Lake.
And the state of trying to do anything on a lake property, so you could add me, I mean. All of my friends have the same issue that I, that I had.
So you may get all three of the lake groups in here one night.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, we're doing our, what you're doing, immunity input.
Oh, yeah.
But it, but it just is sort of at the, even before that.
Right.
This is kinda like, where are we at now?
So that they can prep and get halfway there.
Exactly. Yeah, okay, but we will, I mean, this is kind of, I think this is kind of target, pinpoint, precision bombing. Whereas we'll go in and carpet bomb later, you know what I mean, it's like. Uh, trying to get a sense for where we're at, isn't that what it is? I mean, it's kind of a few of the existing. Um, as I said, I raised my hand, cause I think, you know, obviously. Really, I'm on the front line right here with a lot of it, but. I put, I put Eric Russell on here, I put Mike Dean, I put, so you can.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, Mike should be. Um, but I don't think you need.
We don't need to talk to the whole zoning board right away, I mean.
Right, but I don't think you need members of the zoning board.
Yeah.
Do you, do you need the chair of the zoning board to see what his issue, what the issues they're seeing on the ground?
Right.
Um, you don't need the opinion of all of the. Members of the zoning board.
I mean, it's not, to to me, of all the boards that, I think the Z B A might be one where. Consultants would wanna have a special meeting with that board.
Yeah, okay.
And ask them that question. There's, there's a lot of overlapping longevity on that board. Um, I assume.
Town manager had the idea.
In a military.
Like Vanessa Stone, maybe, somebody like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just added that. Yeah. Obviously, we don't want a hundred people on the list, I think.
No, no.
Again, I wanna try to keep it to about twenty, twenty-five.
Would they wanna meet with like, a a dedicated meeting with real estate agents? And then we could invite a bunch, you know, and have a meeting, I mean, is that?
I mean, it, when we get the public input.
You know, it, the the stakeholders things could even be phone interviews between our consultants. And some real estate agents. I mean, it 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 might not work that way for everybody. But in in terms of of getting things done and just getting. Uh, I I think this would be like the ten thousand foot view.
Yeah.
Um, it it doesn't have to be. I I would think it doesn't have to be a formal meeting, uh, it would be more like an interview. People who think that's.
Right, but do you, do you, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, do they wanna in it? We tell them, you know, go see these two real estate agents, so they have a conversation with them. Or or do they wanna have a? If you are a real estate agent, we wanna talk to you, wanna make ourselves available at a certain time, so forth. And have a round table discussion.
So like I said, I think that there's, what you're talking about with, we, we could absolutely have a, a sort of an input session some point. Later on.
Right.
And it could be real estate focused, we could invite every Realtor in the whole upper valley, if they wanna come talk to us.
Along with, along with.
Yeah, but this, this is just for them to get started.
This is interview to sort of get us to feel. What are some, some of the feelings that people have?
You're gonna wanna involve all those groups in depth later, but this is.
The the other reason to target sort of individuals is, this is actually a very specific question, it's not. Let's list all of the complaints we have about real estate infield. It's, you know, how does zoning impact real estate?
Yeah.
Which is a little, it's a much more nuanced. Uh. Question, uh, I guess one, one thing is, we wanna include somebody from the school district.
We should have that, when we talked earlier.
Yeah, I talked about that, school district.
Or at at least from the elementary school.
It would, um.
Yeah, I think you want.
Yeah, I think you want that. That, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I almost like that.
No.
Cause the um, there's no one at the individual schools that works at the community.
Right.
They're really managing the building.
Okay.
Everything happening in the building.
Yeah.
You know, they're not necessarily thinking about the bus routes or, uh. No, I guess it impacts all of the communities.
No, I did that because I went to their meeting just the night, and three quarters of the meeting was the bus routes.
Right. But like zoning could potentially impact bus.
Right, right.
You know, things like that.
So, um. I've been kind of curious what, what the political viewpoint is on on zoning changes, you know, just. The original zoning, I think I'd be correct in saying, is probably advanced by the more uh. Liberal progressive interest. Uh. And over the years. I'm not sure that's true anymore. Uh, the, the uh. You know, the desire to to free up space and and make more housing available and so forth. You know, where does that stand on the political spectrum? Just thinking, is there somebody or a number of people that could speak to that?
I only heard a small piece of it, but. It's one of the studies, it's just released, or for the fourth, and and the N H P R was reporting on about. It was like eighty percent of the people they surveyed wanted more housing in their town.
Right.
Which was a huge political shift.
Heard that too.
Yeah, from prior ones. So that might be a place to start in terms of gathering some general information.
It may be.
Yeah.
Completely across party lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, but this crosses a lot of other factors. But yeah, yeah.
I've been in the Housing Academy, and a couple of occasions, I talked about, you know, I said, you know, a lot of this. Obviously, we're, we're talking planning zone, and so, you know, we're right in the bull's eye for, for the housing discussion. But I have said, I mean, we've talked about it with, with big development, D O T. By huge.
Yeah.
Impact.
Oh, yeah.
We've talked about uh, uh, G E S has a big septic permitting. Uh, shorelands, wetlands.
New building codes.
New building codes, he is right in the middle of that, and it's like, so it's just like this, there's just all this weight sort of pushing down on the housing. You know, it's a, it, it, you know, costs, everybody wants more housing except the butters to where the house has to go.
Exactly, that's a big one. Or 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 half the state offices.
Yeah.
They're making it harder for developers to build and construct buildings and keep the price down.
Right.
And the other half of the state offices wants us to have more housing. Not talking to the right.
Right. Exactly.
Talk to your representatives.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't know that.